All right, starting with our council reports, I attended the Department Relief Association Meeting last week. They are looking into new investment advisors for their retirement funds. Haven't made any decisions, but they're just looking at things at this point. Was supposed to have a policies and procedures meeting, but we canceled that due to some staff issues, and that's rescheduled for this upcoming Wednesday. Other than that, that's all I have. Oh, I did talk to Neil's wife Patty yesterday. She authorized me to share that Neil's surgery went well. He's recovering in the hospital. I heard today that they moved him out of the ICU, which Patty said was to be expected. He's having some minor complications, but things that they were controlling and taking care of, so he's expected to be home soon. Councilwoman Brick.
We had an E-DAP meeting where we discussed possible sites for a new industrial park, and I attended a Friends of the Library meeting where we just went with kind of where they plan to go in the future.
Councilwoman Brick.
I also was at that E-DAP meeting and then the Planning Commission last Monday, and it'll be on tonight's agenda, so.
Councilwoman Thiel.
I had nothing as policies and procedures was canceled on the airport board meeting tonight was canceled too.
Okay, going on then to our department head reports. Mr. Mergen.
All right, thank you. First of all, the community park, the shelter there was completed. I'd like to inform the council that the costs on it initially, materials ran about $650 overall we had expected, and there was also a cost over about $350. So the initial estimate was 5,700 and ended up being about just over 6700. At this time, parks are all closed down. If residents still want use, parks by all means please do, but the restrooms and all the water have been shut off. Fish and beer, we moved out probably the first week of November. There's actually some usage yet, which is great to see. The RV dump obviously is still open, but also in parks, we did receive three memorial trees, or an empty park and a memorial tree out at the dog park, just to remind you again. We do accept the memorial trees, but we do not allow any plaques. So, let's see, the leak pickup is on November the 6th again. The bags must be out at the curbs at 7:00, 8:00 AM, and they have to be compostable bags only. Our leak detection service, we do this annually. We did canvass the entire town, and we did find one leak, and it was repaired last week. So remember banner for actives that we ordered for the downtown? They have now been installed, so the winter and as well, we put up in the downtown this around the mid-November here. At the airport, there is still a demand for hangers. We have waiting list of three. One person seen pretty happy that we give them one. I told them we do have land for private hangers, and I told them realistically, with all the projects we have going on out there, it's gonna be quite a number of years before the city builds another one, so that is something this pilot is going to look into. Anything else? Questions?
How long is the campus site still open?
Campus site, we will keep open roughly mid-November for sure, weather permitting.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Oliver.
The meetings I attended were the E-DAP meeting with Megan and Jean, library as well, Megan, and the planning meeting. But also Ron and I attended at the high school with some community members who were interested in trying to see if the school, township, and the city would be interested in upkeeping or maintaining two of the four outside tennis courts. Nothing has been decided yet, and we're waiting for some numbers to see how that's gonna go. And then you and I went to the new company that opened up in town, Better Fed Beef, and had a tour and got to know more about the company. And then finally, Ron and I also attended the Safe House School kickoff meeting. That was via Zoom with the Safe House School planning and the consultants assigned to the project. So after that, you know, we need to put together our members for the committee, and we're short one elected official, which we need to nominate. So that's what I have.
These library boards, are they actual Friends of the Library board meetings, or is that the interested group who's trying to get us to build a new library?
I think it's not actually, it's members of the Friends of the Library, but it's not actually the Friends of the Library group.
Those are just certain individuals pushing us?
Looking for a place to put in the libraries.
Shoving not so gently us in that direction.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Sean Oliver? Okay. Right on in, anybody here to the public forum? I'm guessing Riley and Pat don't particularly want to address us now, but maybe later.
I'd guess.
There's the podium. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes that listed on page one. The vouchers on page two totaling $193,918 and 20 cents, along with sending Ron and Bob to the Public Works Central District schooling. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Got a motion by Sony. Is there a second?
A second.
Heard it from Brick first, so motion by Sony, seconded by Brick. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, then? I carries. Before we get into any further, before I forget, Ron has asked that we pull item D for new business, the chloride reduction proposal. He's gonna work with Public Works and come back with us on that later. Fair enough? Okay. All right, the ordinance amendment request. Now, Jean, if you want to tell us about this, or Jennifer, or Riley and Pat?
Well, yeah, Riley has a building that he has a buyer for, and they wish to put cabinet making business in it, and also retail in the front part and living in the back. And our ordinance does not allow manufacturing of product in our downtown area. So the planning has met and discussed it and recommends that we add that business to our downtown available businesses. Is that about it, guys?
Yeah, Luke and Lindsay Doll are the two that are looking to buy it through their company, which is called Northland Woodco. It's an established business. Luke is the owner and only employee. I think Lindsay helps him sort of on the side, but she has another job, so that's not her main line of work. They're a great young couple. I think that not only would it bring a business in that's in demand, and I know this because I was just building and had some challenges even getting bids, as well as Amy Bass who works with us, so there's certainly demand in the area, and also, of course, quite a few empty buildings or buildings that are not used commercially currently downtown. They have the ability there to receive deliveries onsite off the street. Troy already uses my parking lot there for his deliveries, so we know that that's certainly possible, because it's currently happening. So yeah, I think as far as sound, there's some people that talked about sound. It's gonna, everything's gonna be contained within the building. Most of his machines are relatively quiet. I think he might have spoke about, I was unable to come to the last meeting about this because I was in a COVID quarantine, but I think Luke might have talked about that there, but he's assured me that everything is relatively quiet, so. Yeah, I think it'd be a great business for Bainsville. I think it's good that they're already established business, and I don't really see any negative effects on neighboring properties.
Yes, the question that I have and the struggle that I come up with is, we have a zoning ordinance that doesn't permit this, but this is a business that in that location, this family would be perfect. I have no objection to that business going there. But do we want to amend our zoning ordinance to permit any cabinet shop to go anywhere in the C-1 district? It seems to me like perhaps the better approach would be to amend the zoning ordinance to let this be permitted as a conditional use, because then they could still go in that space, but we're not opening the floodgates to any other vacant building that may open up for other light industrial.
I think that in my conversations with Jennifer and Tarek, we were careful to call it a cabinet shop rather than like cabinet manufacturing or something like that. You know, it's certainly a small operation that Luke and Lindsay are running, and you know, if you go through the permitted uses, which I did, and there's a lot of them, I don't, you know, I don't remember how many, but there's a lot. And in my opinion, there are things that would be similar to this that are permitted, and the reason that it's not permitted is because it's not specifically listed, which I fully understand. We also talked about the fact that there have been woodshops in the downtown central business district before John Hardert's, and I think there was one actually, I don't know if that's central business district actually, but just closer to the school there too, so.
Anderson, what do you think of this downtown?
Yeah, so I think we talked that there have been similar things, and we were careful to have the wording to not try to invite larger operations, which I think is what you're referring to.
Yeah, and I get it. I, you know, a couple of those things were, the one just over here existed before the zoning ordinances were adopted, at least is my understanding. My fear is, are we opening up the floodgates to water down our zoning ordinances every time we have an idea that looks good? Because this is a good idea. I don't want to stand in the way of it, but we also have to protect the integrity of our zoning ordinances at the same time. And I think if we could do this as a conditional use, we can still get business in here, we can still get the family, the economic growth, while also simultaneously keeping the structure and the integrity of your zoning ordinance as a whole.
Didn't we discuss that, Tarek? And for some reason, there was a reason we didn't go that route. There was a reason we went this route rather than that, and I don't recall what it was, I have a poor memory, but.
I mean, right now, it's not authorized as a conditional use.
So it's not authorized, like Sean said, as a conditional use, that's why we weren't able to offer you that option. The only option you had at that time to proceed with a cabinet shop is amending the ordinance. That's the only, otherwise it's like, no, you cannot do it. And we were trying to find a way that you could at least, you know, argue your case, and that would be to amend the ordinance.
Yeah.
And what we put in the ordinance is cabinet shop for the production of cabinets.
Yep.
That's my piece. I know it went through planning. I don't think planning had any objections.
No, and that kind of was brought up at planning, and we didn't feel it was, I mean, that it's anything that we have to worry about, because even if a business did want to come in, the downtown doesn't have, I mean, it's not a downtown, that's a retail that's a downtown like it used to be. So manufacturing mixed in with what's already here is not gonna hurt it too much.
I have to agree with that, because the demographics around downtown has changed dramatically in the past 10 years. And I think as a council, we need to adapt to that also, and to invite businesses to come in and set up shop here, and we'll work around that to a certain extent.
I don't think we're gonna see any large cabinet manufacturers want to relocate here. And if they do, they'll have to build, and where are they gonna build? The house will have to be outside somewhere. So I think having a cabinet shop is not really, I don't see it as a threat to having a bunch more want to come in here now.
I don't think one of the things that, excuse me, one of the things I brought up at planning, which, I mean, I think you could do, because this is an unusual situation where they have off-street parking and off-street loading. I think if you just said, because in our zoning ordinance, it says that in the downtown commercial, it says, except if specifically required, there's no requirement for any parking or loading. The parking and loading requirements don't apply in C-1. But if we said that a cabinet shop is a permitted use, but you have to have parking for employees and off-street loading and unloading, they have it, so they would fit. The odds of somebody else meeting all of those requirements seem slim to me. So if you wanted to make it a permitted use, but say, I mean, I think that those things you all have, right? So I don't think it would create an issue for them, and it would protect downtown. The only problem, and I said that it kind of went away when Corner Drug closed, but the sewing operation, you know, we went through a period of years where we had lots of complaints about the parking, their employees parking on the street, everybody was hostile about that. And I think if you just took that out of the equation, if you allow, for businesses that you allow, just say that they have to make arrangements for off-street parking and loading, it seems like that's the biggest complaint we've ever had from a production kind of a business in the downtown area, and they won't have that there. That's just a thought. But, you know, I mean, going with a conditional use permit is another way to do it, but if we just wanted to add language to say that that use requires off-street parking and loading facilities, it doesn't impede what they're trying to do, and I think it protects us as a city from the likelihood that you'd have a lot, you'd have a lot of other production businesses that could meet all of those requirements.
Yeah, they'd have to find some other parking, basically, or loading.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would, that should have been in there when the sewing place, right? Their manufacturing.
Yeah, right, yeah, well, maybe it should have been, but.
But.
But we always, we always looked at it, that we had always kind of allowed for certain sewing businesses, and it just became a little more large scale probably than we were used to, and so that created the parking problem. But we had had sewing businesses, I think, in the downtown area for many years, and I think the theory was we had always allowed dress shops and haberdashers, and it was kind of like, well, really, what's the difference? You know, except that it required more parking.
I was gonna try to shut up tonight, but, you know. I was part of the group that wanted to get made of downtown, redeveloped one a few years ago, and, you know, I think downtown's gonna have to decay further before maybe as a community we decide we have to look at different directions. And I apologize, but what I'm about to say basically is, there's no gun to the city's head about how to change their zoning ordinances, but that needs to happen downtown. And, you know, parking is a serious concern. One of the things I've been advocating is to allow residential on the main floor. If there's successful communities that have redeveloped do that, they bring more people living downtown, and then people living there support whatever businesses might be there. And I, you know, there's something called light industrial, and I don't have the definition for that, I haven't done any research on it, but there might be mom and pop operations that would help revitalize downtown and that, and so, so what you're saying, Sean, could be addressed in these meetings, where find communities that have, that are doing this, and look at how they define light industrial, if that's the term, and I think we need to move that way. That's separate from this issue, but just had to say it.
Well, for what it's worth, I agree with getting residential downtown, main floor, subfloor, upstairs, whatever we need to have. And I, I think the cabinet shop is great, but I, I think doing it through a conditional use permit would be the better way to go. I don't know.
Is it, how much is, how big is the space that isn't the living doors? How big is the rest of the space?
3,000 square feet, plus 1,000 square foot garage.
Okay. Can we put like a space, I mean, I don't think anybody can, yeah, I don't think anybody can move a huge cabinet manufacturing thing into something 3,000 square feet. So if that's a concern, is that?
I forget what the square footage was he was gonna use for manufacturing, but it wasn't that much. I mean, a big part of it's gonna be the shop, the display area, right?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be approximately 2,500 for the, for his shop.
Okay.
And, and then a part of the garage as well for Ms. Brady with this.
Do you know how often they plan to have the retail open?
I don't.
Or is it just, okay. That's my only concern, I think, is that we're gonna have like another corner drug situation?
No, I mean, it's a one, it's a one, I, my guess is that it's gonna be kind of be by appointment only, because he's, I mean, he, he will be the one in the showroom, he'll be the one, you know.
Right.
Constructing the cabinets, so.
Like off the street, but also not a warehouse, so.
The owners, the disposal owners were here for the planning commission meeting. He's working down the cities today, and they couldn't make it till they'd have been here. If you meet them, you'll feel really good about who you're meeting.
They do really nice work, so.
By the way, his wife is kind of a mathematical genius, so if you've got like a, the council committee related to budget, you should try to get her on it.
On a side note, both of you, or all three of you have brought up residential. So residential is a CUP in the downtown district, and that was confirmed a couple years back because of parking. We have people that live downtown above businesses, and they don't have any place to park. So residential right now is a conditional use due to the parking.
It looks like the main issue, or the main, what really defines light industrial is that it can't process really like raw materials or that metalworking isn't allowed. So I think those are the main things that define light industrial's uses in Minnesota, it looks like. So I think it would be, I think it would qualify.
I don't know if I even call it light industrial, and I mean, I'm certainly not an expert on the different classifications, but like I said, and I probably should have highlighted some of the things that I thought were similar, but like contractors can have a shop, and electricians can have a shop, and plumbers can have a shop in the central business zone. So I see it as something similar to that, and yes, he is, you know, doing work in there, but I see it similarly where some of those people are probably doing work in their shops as well. I see it more as a shop than as industrial, but, you know, obviously those things are to some extent a personal opinion, or, you know, I don't know, but to call it industrial at all to me is a push or a stretch.
I'm all in favor for the business going there. I think it's going to be a great addition to town. I still think that it should be done through a conditional use permit. I'd be all in favor of adding it as a conditional use permit, so that they can come in and be here, but I don't think that we should dilute the zoning ordinance to allow for production of materials and goods. That's where I stand. I don't know where anyone else is at, but there's my two cents.
So is it sort of differently from the sewing? Is it a different zone?
No, it's the same as the sewing. The sewing has, as Phil explained, has been here for decades, eons.
Okay.
So they have some grandfathered in, and now it's, you know, what do we want to do with this?
They've moved, though, and my understanding through this process is that there's a whole set of requirements when you do have a change of occupancy in a building, so certainly when, when the production went from there to there, those things would have been under consideration, and that was not eons. And also, as I said, there has been woodshops downtown in the past too, and I understand that they were there before the zoning ordinances existed, but I think that there has been some allowance for production of, you know, of goods downtown more recently.
I just don't think we can worry about businesses taking, big manufacturing coming in, and we already have ANPI, and that's probably as big as anything, and noisier than anything around.
Yes, if they were coming in now, we'd tell them to go to the industrial park.
Yeah, now we would, yeah.
We would rezone downtown, let ANPI here.
But we're not gonna have, I can't see a huge, another manufacturer coming in downtown.
No.
Yeah, I don't see this as a rezoning either. It's a, it's another permitted use.
Right.
It isn't. I'm not asking for zoning change, I'm asking for one more permitted use downtown, which there are already many.
Must be 100 or so.
There's a lot, yeah.
There's a lot.
So if we were to change your ordinance, what would we do to other businesses now that have conditional use permits?
We would not change anything.
It doesn't change them.
Wouldn't change it?
Well, personally, as a person that has a building downtown, it makes, I don't see the issue myself, but. I think to move this along, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 28, third series.
Okay, I have a motion by Sony. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Sony, seconded by Brick to approve ordinance number 28, third series. Any further discussion? We all know where I stand on it. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Here's three to one. And then, just for the record, the only reason I oppose it is I think it should be conditional use, not because I hate businesses.
They do good work.
Thank you.
Then we have a summary of it. Is there any, is there a motion on the summary?
I'll make the motion to approve the official summary of ordinance number 28, third series.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Thiel, to approve the summary of ordinance number 28, third series. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. I carries. Okay. Moving on then to the Hildy Actuarial Services on page 16. It's a pro forma contract for our annual consulting and actuarial services.
This agreement is between the city and Hildy. They conduct the actuarial for Gatsby 75. They determine the liabilities of our retired employees, future and past, and the auditors do need this to conduct the audit.
Is this a new Gatsby or?
Um, no.
It's the same, same one.
Well, they keep adding them, you never know.
Yeah. No, we've had, we've had to do this in the past, and also we also do one for the fire relief. This one is actually for the city.
How long have they been doing business with the city?
Quite a while.
Yeah. There's only a few firms that do this type of thing.
I know they're the go-to even for, like if I'm doing a divorce and we need to value a pension, Hildy's who you go to.
Experts in their field. I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for consulting services between the city of Bainsville and Hildy Incorporated and authorize in the air to sign the document.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Sony, seconded by Brick to approve the agreement for consulting services between the city and Hildy Incorporated. All in favor, indicate for any further discussion on that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. I carries.
Two minutes.
Yes, we do. I saw that, but thank you, Jean. On to the Nature Sidewalk. Ron, can we talk about this in a couple minutes here?
Absolutely, yes. Dr. Nature Park, they would like to install a, it's about 150 feet roughly, of a handicap accessible sidewalk, and they kind of had a target of $7,000, and they said they would not exceed that. They asked the, if the city would pick up half of that cost, this one to the park board, and I think they all felt very strongly that the handicap accessibility is very important, and we do need to accommodate this, so they did recommend up to $3,500 towards the installation of the sidewalk at Nature Park.
See, with their bid came in quite a bit higher than that, though?
That is, if they wanted to go to a stamp to the color of this, or the point in sidewalk.
And this is in the capital improvement?
Yes.
I know it was getting a little small. See if I say that.
Works for me.
Yep. Motion to approve the installation of the handicap sidewalk in Nature Park, can pay for half up to $3,500.
Okay, I have a motion by Sony. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Thiel. Any further discussion?
It was noted in the park board too, that because we received the donation back from the sale of the K-9 unit for that particular amount to cover the dog park, that it was kind of a, you know, it was something that we had already budgeted for anyway, so we felt it was probably a good use of those funds.
Okay, for sure.
All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. I carries. All right, 6:30, so we'll wait for our. All right, six thirty, so we'll wait for certification here. When we come back, reminder, we will come back to item E on the new business, the employee direct deposit, skipping over the chlorine reduction. All right, so our business meeting is adjourned. We'll open the public here for the certification of the passage of bills. I see Mr. Burton is here. presume you want to talk to us about guessing the mowing.
You got it.
As we were seeing, if we didn't get an updated list, that was according to the agenda today.
So the updated list that you have, part of you is updated, what the city has received as well as what Central Senate's got emailed their updated list today. Also, so these are the ones that we have not received payment for, so these are the ones that you would certify. Some of the people on the list you'll notice are people that have been on their year after year vest, just the way that they handle those types of fees.
I was gonna say some of the same people.
Jeff, anything you wanted to tell us?
Just, Mayor and Council, here to answer any questions if there are any. Number one, number two, appreciate the, the list is as small as it's been in recent history. And Jennifer's right, it's usually the same, a couple of the same people, circumstantial, but just here to answer any questions. And also to share with the council that we appreciate the partnership we've had with the city for a long time. And certainly look forward to continue working with the staff and the council on providing garbage and recycling services for the city of Painesville. So thank you for that opportunity.
All right, anybody else here? I assume we didn't get any comments or anything for the hearing?
We did not. Of course, there's always questions right away after the letters go out. But once we answer those questions and direct them to where they need to pay their fees if they still desire, we didn't have any other ones.
Well, then I'm going to close our public hearing. We will reopen our business meeting. And in light about coming to letter E, we'll just jump ahead to all of this, letter B, the certification of past due garbage, water, and sewer rescue bills. Somebody wanted to make a motion for certification of those.
I seem to be doing them all. I'll do it again. Motion to certify delinquent garbage, sewer, water, mowing, and vehicle fire to the county auditor to be put on the real estate taxes.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick for the certification of past due delinquent garbage, water, and sewer mowing and vehicle fire to the county auditor to be put on real estate taxes. Any further discussion? Hearing saying none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Here it is. Okay, now we'll go back up to direct deposit. Tarek, Jennifer, does one of you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, this is just, want to give notice to employees that by year end, we want to have everybody on direct deposit and no more checks.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the time and labor that will be saved by doing this?
Uh, I didn't, I didn't calculate the time and labor in it, but I know that Belinda did and she said that, I think it's an extra.
It is, and when you do both hard checks and you have nine people on that, so whether you have one person on a hard check or nine or ninety, you actually have to input payroll twice, parts of payroll twice. So we are really trying to streamline, be more efficient in accounts payable, accounts receivable, and payroll departments. And this is one area, after going to the MCFOA conference, they said, yes, you can switch all people to direct deposit. I did research the Minnesota State statute on that, we can. There's less chance of error because we have to input some of those figures in twice to do the annual hard checks and direct deposit. Also, people then, if they are out or on vacation, they're sick, they actually physically have their money in their bank account.
Well, there've been instances where checks have been forgotten to.
We've had instances where checks have been found in parking lots. We have a few people that are on hard deposit that have had, or excuse me, on hard checks that have been with the city a very long time. That's why we wanted to bring it forward to policies procedures, but that meeting got canceled. But we want to do it in October to get those people enough time so that they can, you know, find out which account they want their money put in or which accounts. Some people have two or three or four accounts that they can divide their paycheck into. So we authorize those to get those signature pages out to them in time to get it back by that January, that first pay period in January.
So knowing in the past, there were some issues with direct deposit and payroll being processed on time, so that everything could make direct deposit. That's no longer an issue. Is that correct?
On wood, we have not had any direct deposit issues and/or meeting the timeline to date.
Isn't it primarily the bank cutoff time that you have to meet?
We have to meet the bank cutoff time, yes. And we are, right now, because of the efficiencies that we put into place, we are ahead of that. We can potentially do payroll in about four hours, if, just on a regular payroll schedule. If we have to include council and fire department, it does extend that.
Have we heard anything from any of the employees about whether or not this is a problem?
Um, no, I, I, no. One person kind of grumbled at me when I, I mentioned it, but I, I think he'd be okay with it.
He's gone in a couple of years.
What was that?
I'm the old school here.
Yeah.
And then of course they.
Getting that paper check.
You know, and of course then it would also save, you know, time for like the, some, some of the guys in some of our departments have to use the company to give their check. They, you know, wouldn't necessarily have to come in and grab it then, worry about it, it's already in their account.
Well, you're not, you have to have an account for social security now. You can't get a paper check.
Yeah, so actually Sean had brought that up earlier when we talked about this, what about maybe a new employee that doesn't have an account? And of course, if it's a new employee, you would authorize, you know, maybe thirty, sixty, ninety days for those people to set up their accounts here, get that finalized, and then switch over to a current deposit.
I think it's great to allow it myself.
An emotion?
That would be a motion.
We'll see if we can get all of them tonight.
I'll, I'll try.
All right, Jean's made the motion to move all employees to direct deposit effective January one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Good motion by Sony, seconded by Thielen, move all employees to direct deposit effective January one. And I'm going to take out recommending such to the city council. Any further discussion on that?
I'm, I'm going to abstain just because it affects some of my coworkers, but is that, can you, legally, you can require that people have bank accounts? Is that an issue?
I have not researched it, but I, at the MCFOA, apparently they.
Well, we can mandate that all employees have a blood chart and a pass, I guess.
Okay, I assumed, but I was just.
Yeah, according to the state statutes, four seven one dot four two six.
Okay.
May acquire a direct deposit for all employees who are being paid by its payroll system.
All righty.
It doesn't have to be checking. It can be savings. It can be any account.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think if there, if we knew of somebody that was of those non-employees that we, we did not think, did not have some, some type of financial account, certainly we'd get to prevent their consideration, but we believe that all of them do.
You can also have that put on a loadable card.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Does carry with one abstention.
Thank you.
All right, on to page fifty-five. Fifty-four, fifty-five, whatever page we're on here.
Fifty-five.
It says fifty-five, but it starts on fifty-four. The AFME contract, we met, labor negotiations met with representatives from the union. It was a very productive meeting. I was grateful. We all had our doubts heading into it. But I think it proved very worthwhile and we got to an agreement, what, about an hour and a half?
Yep.
A few hours?
Yeah, it was good.
Well, I've taken a look at the contract in here. I know Tarek's read it. I know Neil did as well. But the contract did reflect the terms that were agreed upon in that meeting.
Yes.
So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the contract.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the city of Painesville and AFME sixty-five city bargaining, city hall bargaining unit and authorize the labor negotiations board members to sign that out.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Seconded by Thielen. Ms. Brick, are you planning to abstain again?
Yes.
This is not effective until January first. I think we're okay with leaving a spot for Neil to sign. Any further discussion on that, though? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Here it is. Driver's license written exam.
Okay, I think Melinda and Melinda were asking that we allow for written exams. And it does bring extra revenue for the city. I think it's ten dollars per exam. And it would be a good benefit for the community to offer these exams.
Any idea when this would start?
I don't know. I don't have a date.
Well, we would need permission to actually like submit documents to the state. I think once they approve it, give us our rules and, you know, protocols to follow. I think then it would just be advertised and hopefully they get started even before the first of the year. Potentially, we're probably, we're working on maybe using this room yet, still using the COVID entrance, but still having testing here. And then not only do we get the ten dollar testing fee, but then if they're here taking the test, we can encourage them to go up to the counter and actually apply for their instruction permit and then we get a amount of eight dollars. So it's more than just the ten dollars we're providing a service plus the additional eight. Where right now, they're going to St. Cloud and Wilmer doing those tests and they could be going anywhere to get those instruction permits.
Yeah.
Or they're driving Mach ninety, you can get here before, you know, we close or Litchfield closes or wherever.
Well, we used to do it.
We did used to do it. Now they're actually operated for the deputy registered to be that proctor. Similar to the adults in the household that got to be the proctor for their fifteen-year-old, like I was, for Preston, when he took his written exam at home. You had to fill out and certify that you weren't a little cheat and you had thirty minutes to take it and.
I just, are these going to work? Were there a set time each week? Kind of like, I mean, my recollection is that it used to be you'd come in on Monday or whatever.
So we've actually been talking about that and we, we know that Mondays, Fridays, and Thursdays are not good days because hopefully if we get the examers back here to do the behind-the-wheel test, hopefully they'll come back on a Thursday. So we would like to do the test on Wednesday. And we're hoping if we have enough technology and enough laptops or iPads, that we could do possibly four at a time. And, you know, they allow, when we used to do it at home, they allowed thirty minutes to take the test. Most people were done with it in about twenty minutes.
Would, uh, testing for commercial vehicles be included?
We believe so.
Because it's tough to get to St. Cloud or Wilmer.
Yeah, so once we, hopefully, if you pass it, we can do a little more research, try to get approved to be that proctor, and then hopefully see what those protocols are lined up to be.
Cool.
But I know that we would be very busy. It'd be by appointment. And hopefully we could take, you know, three or four every half hour. You know, because some people are going to test quicker than others, so.
Well, they have to have an appointment.
Yeah, we would take appointments.
Yeah.
It would pull somebody off the front counter to be that proctor, but we think for one day, that's not the end of the world.
Right.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve investigating the process of acting as a proctor for the state of Minnesota and administer written tests in Painesville.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick to approve the process of acting as proctor. Any further discussion on that? None. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Here it is. Running out to old business, the official summary of the lodging tax ordinance.
This is just a formality, isn't it?
Yep.
Motion to approve the official summary of ordinance number twenty-seven third series.
I have a motion by Sony, seconded by.
I'll second.
All, seconded by Thielen to approve the summary of the ordinance we passed at our last meeting. Any discussion on this? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Here it is. Running down to page eighty-four on the COVID PTO. Back last year, the council discussed all of the COVID-ish situations. There was authorization for an additional forty hours of PTO that employees could use either if they were diagnosed with COVID and had to take time off or later with the vaccine, if they had to take time off for the vaccine. That was dropped when the emergency declaration was rescinded. And the recommendation from city hall is that that be reinstated retro to October first. But now, Tarek, you want to tell us anything more about that or?
Uh, well, the reason I think we need to bring this back is because, as you know, there's been a increase in cases in the county and even here in the city. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think that it should continue at least, you know, for the near future because, or at least through the wintertime and springtime. I know that some employees have used up all of their COVID time, but this will apply to employees that haven't used up their COVID time.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion to allow any employee who has not already used their COVID nineteen paid sick leave up to two weeks paid sick leave for COVID nineteen. Employees can borrow up to an additional forty hours that can be paid back that are not eligible for FLMA. And the amount of time will be prorated for part-time employees for the two weeks retroactive to October first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, I have a motion by Sony. Ms. Brick, I presume you're abstaining for this one?
Yes.
Paul, are you willing to second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Sony, seconded by Thielen, as stated on the action sheet. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None. Here it is. All right, that concludes then our business. We have some informational things on here. Our census, we dropped a little bit in population, which saves, let me stop a little bit of recording time. Our liquor reports, our meeting schedules, and then the notice that we might be getting some opioid settlement funds. With that, we will close our council meeting and we will go into a closed session for a discussion of the sale of property or setting a price for parcel number seven zero point three eight six four one point zero zero four zero. And for this, I will leave at Chuck Evans' discretion if they want to stick around. Jennifer, I would ask that you stay with us.